Can not hear.
Good morning Karen, good morning everyone.
Good morning, and if we could turn up the sound that would be terrific.
I'm sorry, are you not able to hear us? Oh, you can't, okay. So I see the first slide set is restructuring current use in DFL. Is that the public benefit rating system presentation? It is, okay, we just have a different title for it. So who's gonna go ahead and present?
It'll be our assessor, Peter Van Norvik. Do you wanna come on up?
Morning councilors, this is also Melissa Leonard, my current use specialist in case you have questions upon current use. So I guess I was asked by the council to come and give a little update on what we had done previously for the public benefit rating system. So I guess if we can go to the next slide. Alright, in terms of background, we have a number of current use programs in the state of Washington. Under the state of Washington, those are managed by the office of the assessor. They include what's called Open Space Taxation Act, designated forest land. Do wanna talk to you a little bit about combining DFL and timberland, which is something we wanted to do before under the, when we were looking at the public benefit rating system, but that never happened. Then the public benefit rating system, which also we went through the process and when we came back to present to council, then it did move forward on that. The addition of farm conservation and then considerations that we had talked about in 2020. Alright, next slide. And I'm gonna move through these quickly, just because we don't wanna get too in the depth in this 'cause it's kinda to bring you guys, refresh everyone on what the public benefit rating system was and we looked at. So the 2017 work session, at that point, the council gave us the direction to move forward with developing a public benefit rating system. And in 2018, we formed the public benefit rating system and we were tasked to answer a couple of questions. First was, the public benefit rating system was right for Clark County? And the second one, if so, what would that look like? So, next slide. So we did pull together a large committee. You can see we had the historic committee, parks advisory board, the farm advisory board, Columbia Land Trust, WSU exemption, extension, sorry, G.I.S., conservation districts. Our office, of course, was leading that, community development, community planning, prosecuting attorney's office, public works, they were all involved in these teams in terms of putting together the public benefit rating system. So we had pulled together a big team. So, little bit of background in current use programs, there's kind of two. There's ones that's under the Open Space Taxation Act. And then there's also what's called Designated Forest Land, which is a separate program under a separate taxation act. But in the Open Space Taxation Act, we have enhancement of recreational opportunities, conservation of, enhancement of natural resources, stream protection, soil conservation, historic sites, farm and agriculture, and then there's also timberland. So when we were discussing the public benefit rating system, if you're looking at the slides, all those that were under the black line at the top, those ones would be considered in the public benefit rating system when we were looking at it before. Cause farm and ag and timberland, timberland, of course, we wanted to go away to merge with designated forest land. We'll talk a little bit about that later. And then we had the farm and agriculture, which is a second, kind of a separate program that has certain requirements for commercial farming in order to remain in that program. And there's also certain things in statute in terms of how you value land in that property. So when we're looking at public benefit rating system, that would not have changed. So the current use programs, they are state programs under the RCWs. Our responsibilities are the farm and agriculture and the designated forest land. The council has responsibility for open space and then, you know, open space timberland. And what that means by you have responsibility, we still kinda manage it, but the approval of getting into that program, those need to come before the council. And one of the reasons for kind of wanting to even begin to look at the public benefit rating system to begin with is when those open space applications happen and council approves them, they just kinda go into a black hole. No one is ever, really ever looking at those properties again, seeing if they're even fulfilling what we were trying to fulfill. Whereas in terms of farm and agriculture and designated forest land, they have certain times that we have to audit them, to make sure that they are, you know, really abiding by the program. And that, you know, like designated forest land, you have to have a forest plan. Farm and ag, every so often, you need to, you know, demonstrate that you're actually commercially farming and having income from it. Next slide. One of the things of the public benefit rating system was, there's no revenue impact at all in the county. And kinda the, one of the reasons for doing it is, would be a tax shift. Right now, the people that are in current use, that qualify, the way that the state sets up the valuation of land makes it so their assessed value is extremely low in compared to everyone else that's on it. So those people with those low assessed values, those taxes are being shifted onto the rest of the tax base. And I would say, most of the questions that I get that people call in to talk to me personally, they say, "Well, I'm looking at this property over here and its taxes are incredibly low. Why are mine so high? It's not fair." And I'm saying, "I'm sorry, but you know, it's in current use program and you know, that's the way that we do it." Under the state law, that's kinda really how it does. And the way that you value property that's in current use is you figure out what the value should be based upon rents that people are paid for, right? What people pay, would rent that property for. Well, we have a situation in Clark County, right? There's not a lot of people that are renting farmland to actually commercially farm. So you find rents on farmland are very low, they're not indicative of a real market. Whereas in places like, you know, the tri-cities, you know, Benton County, Franklin County, Yakima County, where, you know, there's an active renting of farmland, you know, the current use and using those rents actually brings a value that's pretty close to what market value is. But in Clark County, it's like, you may have properties of five acre or 10 acre parcels that are assessed at 500, 600,000 just for the land, that aren't in current use. And then those that are in current use, you know, they'll be, you know, 50, 60,000. So you have a huge difference in those. And so what we were, one of the reasons why we wanted to look at that public benefit rating system to begin with is those areas that we could address, we wanted to do it, we wanted to make the tax system so it's more equitable. Cause in a public benefit rating system, what you can do is by rating it, you can say, "Okay, well, you've done certain things that we want you to, that we've, as a committee, as a county, have decided they're a public benefit." And so what we can do is say, "Oh, you know, you have trails and you provided the public access. Well, we think that's a public benefit that's worthy of a 10% reduction in your assessed value." So then it would be, "Okay, we still take your market value like we do, but now that reduction is only a 10% reduction." Instead of like now, it'd be like 80 or 90% reduction. And so it was a way to kinda bring the valuation of those properties more in line to be more equitable in terms of what they're actually doing. Cause one of the challenges that we have in Clark County is when you have properties and they have extremely low assessed values and in their current use, that means when they decide they wanna take them out of the current use program, you have to pay the back taxes, interest and penalty. And so what it does is it makes the amount to take it out extremely large. And then basically what it does is it makes it so really the only people that can afford to buy that land and take it out are large developers. And so it kinda was, you know, making it an issue where it didn't really-
For us for a few questions, 'cause I wanna make sure I understand. We did have a briefing on this like two or three years ago.
Yeah.
I didn't realize the history and what the recommendations had been prior to 2018, I guess, when the recommendations came. So, one, it sounds very complicated for the individual taxpayer. And then on the other hand, to me, I'm like, "Ah, this looks like a regulatory mess as far as rating and how is that carefully and consistently done so that's fair?" And then what happens during the transition? You know, so I could see the downside to having these huge penalties, interest and a payment. And people would say, "Well geez, I can't afford to transition out of this current use." But, so how do you handle the transition point? I mean, does it happen all at once? Does it happen over a number of years? How do you do that?
Well, we never got to that point. Because when we came back to present to the council, then the council, the council that had approved it and asked us to move forward, by the time we came back and were finished and came back to the new council, some of the people that were benefits of the public benefit rating system or proponents were off the council and the new council wasn't interested moving forward. So we actually never even got to that next step. But say basically, we met with all those different organizations, all the different stakeholders, and we came up with, you know, in terms of a rating system. And with the rating system, it's really laid pretty straightforward. You go, "Okay, you allow public access, yes or no?" You know, so if you do, then there's, you know, a certain percent off that you can get, you know? If you, you know, do these different things or you have these different things on your property, then you would get that, in terms of that rating. And then even if you agreed with the rating, right, when we would do the initial rating, you would be able to appeal that in terms of moving forward. So, but like I say, we never got that far because the council never said, "Okay, let's move forward and start planning on how we do it."
Thank you. So, does anyone else have questions right now? Go ahead.
Question real quick, so this slide here, the tax shift. So you mentioned that it's revenue neutral for the county, but that it shifts the tax burden. So can you explain a little bit? I mean, there's still a reduction in the taxes, but if revenue remains neutral, then where is that burden being shifted to?
Well, the burden would be shifted off of the tax base onto those property owners that are currently in the current use open space program.
If I could just elaborate a little bit, I think the equity part of it is important here. So right now, it's across the board, everybody gets the same. Where some properties may be providing really more of a benefit to the public because it may be riparian habitat, maybe oak savanna, it could be, it could be a historic site, they could allow public use. So it's really, there's more of a public benefit. And it just seems to me, they should get more of a benefit with the property tax reduction than someone who's, it's just open land.
Yeah.
And one thing came to mind too, 'cause you know, I lived for a number of years in California and one of the propositions from like 30 years ago limited the increase of property tax. So that created a lot of inequity. But it was great for long-term property owners. So, I mean, even with the exact same use, you could have a next door neighbor paying taxes from 30 years ago versus the new neighbor that just moved in paying extraordinarily currently high taxes. So there was inequity there built into it. But the longer-term residents really benefited and that was the reason for the proposition that they, the public passed. So I'm really concerned about harming those uses. You know, harming taxpayers that are paying lower taxes. If I asked a hundred people, "Are you paying lower taxes?", they'd all say, "Oh my God, no, I'm paying really high taxes." But for those that are benefiting from the way taxes are right now, I'd be afraid of harming. And that's the part I'm still trying to grasp is, what impact is this gonna have on those people who are in the current use that would then be-
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we haven't got to yet, but I think it's a good thing to discuss maybe now, ahead of time, was one of the things that we don't have in Clark County is what's called farm conservation. And so what happens is, if you have a farmer that is aging out on their property and they're at the age they wanna retire and they can no longer commercially farm, that property has to come out of the current use farm and agriculture. And then they are being hit with these huge penalties for not being able to farm anymore. And if you implemented the public benefit rating system, part of that public benefit rating system is we could install farm conservation into it. And so those farmers that are saying, "Hey, I'm too old really to farm anymore. I wanna save this as farmland. My kids aren't really interested in coming and farming it." They can put it into farm conservation. So even though it's not being farmed, it's being saved for future farmland down the road. And so currently, we don't have that. So that was one of the, I think the drivers, and Sue can correct me, because I think, Sue, you were representing the farm.
Actually, I wasn't on the committee, but I attended several of the meetings.
Yeah.
I appreciate, there was a great deal of work that you and your office did to develop, I think, a lot of, deal with a lot of the complexities of this, which largely- In the next decade or so, there's gonna be, this is gonna be a huge issue. The other thing that I think is important, I hate to interrupt your flow of your presentation, but I think this can provide an incentive for those property owners that maybe they're not doing anything with their land, that might be incentivized to plant some oaks or do some riparian work or make their land accessible to the public to come on and recreate. So I think there's incentives that this could provide.
Let me, cause I wasn't quite done before. I wanted to follow up on what you were saying. Cause we're looking at alternatives too. And we're pressing this for years now to get conservation overlay on those properties that would solve the exact same issue that you're talking about. Maybe if there's, it skips a generation or a new property owner comes in, farmland's still there and available. So there are some alternatives and I'm wondering if, and I'm hoping that our staff is working on them, at least for heritage, that should be the first step to conserve. But did you, do your committees look at these alternatives to this rating scheme?
That was not what we were attracted to do. We were basically directed to look at what a public benefit rating system look like and come back and say, "Okay, this is what it was, looked like." I think it was, the recommendation, it was actually a recommendation from, I think it was the 2012 rural land study, I think was the, where the original recommendation came that Clark County should look at a public benefit rating system.
One more question, and then any other questions that are out there. I know we're derailing the pace of your presentation, but we need to get these questions answered. How many of the counties have it in place and it's working successfully? Or how many counties have put it in place and said, "Man, this is, this is not working out as projected"?
Oh, Michelle, is that? Oh, that's merging with DFL and timberland, and we'll talk about that in a second. Yeah, 23 of the 39 have a public benefit rating system. Oh, you can see a lot of our similar type counties do have a public benefit rating system.
So from an assessor's foxhole, is it looking with those 22 counties? I mean, what's your opinion of how it's working elsewhere?
Well, I mean, I think it works well. It's a situation where you're actually looking and managing the property. Like I said, now, when something is approved into open space, it goes into basically a black hole. It's, you know, no one's ever looking and say, "What are they actually doing with this land?", you know? Are they, just 'cause they got it in there and they have certain soil types and, you know, they be parking used cars on it? You know, they could be doing a lot of different things and no one's actually managing and looking at it. Whereas if you're farm and ag, we're coming to you and always saying, "Are you commercially farming?" Every so often, you have to send in your income and take a look and we'll say, "Okay, you're, you have enough income that qualifies for, to say you're commercially farming." Same thing in designated forest land, they have to send in a timber plan that lays out exactly what they're going to do. And we can go and say, "Hey, are you harvesting when you're supposed to be harvesting? Are you replanting when you're supposed to be replanting?" In those other programs, there's ways to kinda watch and make sure that, you know, people are actually doing what it was, the purpose of the program. And that's mainly because those are kinda managed by, you know, the assessor's office.
Okay, sorry for all those interruptions.
Oh, that's okay. So just right now, in terms of in Clark County, yeah, to be involved in open space, you have to have a minimum of 10 acres exclusive of, you know, the one acre home site. So if someone does have a home on that land, then they have to basically have 11 acres in order to qualify for the program, and that is a, was a council decision. So you can see some of the things that are in open space is golf courses, airstrips, sports complexes, parks, lakes, you know, those properties are in, you know, the system. And understand that if it's a private park, and I'm like Alderbrook, right? And I'm trying to think of what the one is, the park, it's just by Skyview, I drive past it every day. But it's basically owned by a company that allows to use it for the park, right? For the Salmon Creek Little League, trying to think of the name of the park. But they allow basically, you know, full public access on it. And there's no difference in terms of tax benefit as to, they both get the same tax benefit. And so with a public benefit rating system, you could say, "Well, yeah, you have a private park, that's nice. We're gonna give you a 10% off of your assessed value. But over here, you have a park and you allow the public to come on it? Maybe that's 30% off of the assessed value." So we can do things to encourage stuff. And I know a lot of the cities, when they talked about it, they were interested in it 'cause they would say, "Well, we're trying to build, you know, paths through different locations." And, you know, we come up to, there's a homeowner and it's like, "Okay, we need that path to go through the back of your property." And there's no real mechanism now to sit there and say, "Hey, we can give you a public benefit if you allow us access."
I was going back to your comment before, my question before where it was, public access, yes, no? And you just said, "Well, 10% or 30% discount." That sounds a lot different than, I mean, that's a confusion and complexity of the regulatory rating scheme that may not be applied evenly among taxpayers. So can you explain that?
Okay, so in that situation, you would say, "Okay, you have a park." And when you're asking the felt, and let's just say there's two 10 acre parks right next to each other, they look identical. This one says, "This is just a private park where we are hosting our own picnics, company picnics and everything." And so it's basically a business that does qualify as a park. Alderbrook would say it's an example of that. So they, today, they get the same benefit as a park. They would say, "Hey, yeah, we provide all this stuff and the public can come in at any time," right? It's kinda the same thing with golf courses, right? You could have private golf course and a golf course that's, you know, members only versus one that's also open to the public, right? We could say, "Yeah, you provide a public benefit of having a private golf course, but that public benefit isn't as great as a golf course that you provide open public access, not just members only."
So it's not simply yes or no, there are qualifiers thereafter? And so airstrips, privately owned, open to the public?
Yeah.
Or aircraft? And is that a yes/no answer or did they get a full benefit?
Well, let's see, is the homeowner, or the property owner would tell you, "Are you gonna allow, do you allow public access or not?", yes, no, you know? Or is it strictly, you know, members only? That's, you know, and then we can go and verify that. If they say, "Hey, we allow everyone on there and we go and go to Royal Oaks and say, "Well, it looks like you're just members only that can come on here." Versus, you know, a golf course that allows, you know, just the public to come in. Like, I'm not even sure if Hartwood's still open, but Hartwood would have been an example of one that, you know, the public can just come on compared to, say, a Royal Oaks or a Green Meadows, which is a basically club-based golf courses.
So it's basically determining whether or not there's a public benefit or not?
Yeah.
It's something the public can benefit from?
Yep.
Well, that makes sense that they should get, you know, a reduction in their property taxes. If there's no benefit really to the public, why should the public be subsidizing that?
Yeah, and I guess the thing to understand is it's, when we did the committee, we came back, we said, "Okay, there are these different levels." But ultimately, it's the council's call as to say, "We think this is a greater public benefit than that and therefore, we think that there should be, you know, bigger decreases off the assessed value for doing this or doing that." The same thing with historical properties, right? You can have, "Oh, I have a historical property, I'm keeping it, that's great." But you can also have people that have, say, "I have an historical property and I will allow students to come in on the property and, you know, do educational stuff on it, that has a greater public benefit and then that can be adjusted." But you have to have the public benefit rating system in order to, you know, do that to begin with, so. So just keep, mainly it was a way to give council more control over how much of a tax break they wanted these different properties to have. Alright, so we move on to the next slide. Also, you know, I'll just go, stream protection, soil conservation, you know, to get an open space use- soil, soil conservation, you know, to get an open space, you have to have certain types of soils. You know, if there's historic site, those also ones that are coming in and, you know, say currently, if you have an historic property and you allow public access or you don't allow public access, you know, it's, you basically are getting the same benefits. Next slide. Say farm and agriculture, you have to be actively publicly farming. We do every so often have audits. And that is where it really can be very bad for some of the people that Council Marshall was talking about because, you know, the farmer got sick, maybe, he can't work the farm anymore, he doesn't have kids to do it, there's no one that wants to rent the farm out anymore, it comes time to audit, I haven't farmed it for, you know, the last three years, you know, they don't qualify anymore. And that property is taken out immediately and there's no place for them to move to. And so that is a huge issue and, you know, Council Marshall, you probably run into more people that can speak to that than, than I can. But that was one of the challenges and why the public benefit rating system was wanted to begin with. All right, next slide. Timberland, right now, we have two different timberland programs. We have open space timber and designated forest land. One of the things that we wanted to do, and we still want to make sure that at some point this would get done, is to merge open space timber and designated forest land. I think right now, Melissa, do we have anyone that ever applies for open space timber?
Very rarely. Very rarely we'll have somebody apply for timber. Usually, the only time they do is because they have properties that are contiguous and that are already in timber. So they're wanting to apply for the same program that their remaining acreage is already in. But other than that, we, we typically don't get any timber applications.
Open, open space timber, you get, instead, they apply for designated forest land. And the requirements to get in are different, but there's also, there's a loophole also of coming out of.
For designated forest land, there's no penalty. So with our open space programs, if a parcel's removed for either non-compliant, or if they're removed within 10 years of classification, there's a 20% penalty on top of the removal of additional taxes and interest. Whereas designated forest land does not have a 20% penalty. So we've found that there is a loophole for properties that are reclassified from any of our open space programs into designated forest land. The loophole is, they, they reclassify so that 20% penalty is not assessed, and then they turn around and remove it. And that removal is significantly less because of the, the specifications of how we calculate removals for designated forest land as we do for any of our open space programs. So I mean, so it is possible for a property owner to not have to pay, you know, the normal amount of a removal with, within the designated forest land reclassification.
And, you know, we do have, say, land developers that are very smart in terms of this, they'll say, oh, it's an open space timber, I want to take it out. Oh, the cost to take it out are going to be very high. I'll just switch it over to designated forest land. And it's a lot cheaper for us to take it out, and then they take it out. And so it's not actually preserving the land at that point, it's just, they're using it as a mechanism to not pay the compensating taxes that they have.
The solution for that loophole would be to?
Combine open space timber and designated forest land, because then we're saying, oh, best program's gone, we're just moving everything into the designated forest land.
Great.
All right, next slide. So, yeah, designated forest land, also, they only need a minimum of five acres. They do have to be compliant with the forest regulated laws. There's no income necessarily that's required, but we do require a timber management plan, so to make sure that we are actively managing those properties. Next. So I say, I just talked a little bit about that merging. Say, it affects the tax basis too, maybe you can, I don't know. I haven't even thought about this for at least two years. But there is a difference in terms of designated forest land in determining timber assessed values. Also, the fact, one of the big facts is, is we do have redundancy in our, our programs right now, which, you know, causes issues because some people think they're in DFL and they're really in open space timber, and then say there's confusion between that. So that would, it would make it simpler. And then any timberlands would, you know, keep their classification when they're transferred to the other one. So when we would go to take them out, you know, we would basically be going back to the day that they became into the program. Slide please. Say, 18 counties have already done, done that merger, and that was one thing that we, and that's, that merging of DFL and open space timber is actually separate from the public benefit rating system. We can just take that, take that and merge it together without even dealing with the public benefit rating system. So again, in the public benefit rating system, say, designated forest land or open space timber and farm and ag wouldn't even be impacted. It would just be the rest of the open space ones, so recreational opportunity, conservation enhancement, string protection, soil conservation, you know, historic sites, those would be the ones that we would go and we'd be able to grade them in terms of the different, what we, with the council or the, the team that, then the council approved, the different benefit and what kind of a tax reduction we want to give them. And like I say, is, it would allow us, the main thing was to allow the farm conservation. And also, you know, we could make adjustments on, in terms of size of properties that would be eligible to be in the public benefit rating system that would help some of the cities, say, when they're wanting to put trails through. You know, there's a lot of people, I don't want people walking through my backyard, you know? I don't want the public doing that. And so at this point, they'll say, no, and the, a lot of the cities, they don't really have any options. Where before they'd say is, okay, well, if we put this trail through, you can get your property into the public benefit rating system and that's going to give you, you know, 20% off or 30% off of whatever it would be decided of your assessed value of your land. And so you're getting, you know, a reduction in your taxes in exchange for allowing the public to utilize that portion of the property for a trail. Next slide. So, you know, the reasons we told them to begin with is allow flexibility to address unique land situations, provide tax options for those that no longer qualify for the other programs, that's farm conservation, and really empowers the community to further conserve. Because there can be different things that, right now, that aren't allowed. We can say, hey, if you do these things, we can give you, you know, a tax reduction on your land because we want to do something. And, you know, Council Marshall said, you know, it could be protecting a certain type of a tree, right? Maybe someone only has two acres, but they have a grove of trees that, you know, maybe the original spruce or something, Clark County, I don't, you know? But there's different things that we could add in and say, hey, yeah, we want, there's a public benefit in protecting this, but it doesn't qualify. But we could, you know, make changes to allow these different types of conversation, conver, I can't even say it, conservation efforts to take place if we had a mechanism for doing so, which we currently don't. So, yeah, who has, 22 of the 39 counties, you know, the open space farm conservation, I've talked about this quite a bit. So it's, that's a basically new option that we could do. And when we came up with the public benefit rating system, we basically had broken it up into parks and recreation, critical habitat, historic preservation, and then farm conservation would be kind of the, the four blocks that would be set into. And then, you know, the rating system that would be then applied within each of those different blocks. Next slide. Say, the farm, farm conservation, what had been proposed was a 10 acre minimum. They had to show the land needed to be farmed or not in the program. And I don't remember this time, it's been, say, years since, at least four, since this has even been discussed. But then, you know, in terms of different points, you know, and that could be land types or different types of streams or something that are running through the farm, you could have the different points would then, would return to a higher reduction in terms of their assessed value. Say, the, oh, the combined open space and DFL courses, you know, better management. Public benefit rating system would also write, say, raise appeals for the historical registry because, you know, you can also, getting houses on, on the historical registry can also encourage people to get a tax benefit, where sometimes people don't want to put anything on the public registry because of potential limitations that it may put on their property, with very, seen as not really having a lot of benefit. The biggest benefit is preserving farmland and we having looked at the potential labor costs and all that to implement the program. Because when it died in 20, you know, I think it was right there at the beginning, right, we were going into the pandemic. And so it all, once the council said they didn't want to move forward, basically, we stopped with any of the work that was being done on that. Next slide, please. That's basically, in a nutshell, what was going on in 2018 to 2020 in terms of the public benefit rating system.
Go ahead, Sue.
Thank you. Well, thank you for this presentation. I know a great deal of work was put into this and, you know, there were actual scores assigned based on those categories. There could have been at least another 10 pages to this presentation if we wanted to go through all of this. But where I recall things were left off was you, you didn't have an opportunity to really go out to the public to vet this. The public never had an opportunity to weigh in on this in any way. So it hasn't really been tested out in the public, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. Because we were there then to come back to council and say, there's a new council, the council, mm, you know, the proponents, for, for like, what is this? What do you know about this? And, you know, we're really not interested in moving forward with it at that time because the proponents were then off the.
Right. And I think I'm, I hope folks won't be put off because of the complexity of this. Because I think there's a lot of really great features to the public benefit rating system. And I think a big one is the incentive to conserve. And I know as we're working on our comp plan update, and one of the charges is for us to look at climate change, resiliency and adaptation. I think this is a program that would be at no cost to the public to begin to implement some of those, some of those goals. And, and again, I would just reiterate, the farm protection is, is really important, I think, kind to folks who have been probably farming for generations and closing that forest loophole. And I think just building an equity into the system related to what is really a benefit to the public that warrants, you know, a subsidy of their property taxes. So I, I would like to see this move forward.
Karen, Michelle, any comments or questions?
I would like to see this move forward. I'm wondering if the next step would be to have public input?
Michelle, any comments or questions?
I was wondering what Counselor Bowerman just mentioned. Can we have public input now at this point?
Well, I think the council as a whole, at least three, would need to move it forward before we ever move towards public comment, and maybe we're almost there.
Well, and my question was, is that in fact the next step if we were to move forward with this?
Well, to be frank here, I would not be very wanting to move forward with it during an election year. Because we did, and Sue can attest to this, we did a lot of work. And we have lots of council support. And then to put all that work in to come back and basically like, mm, no, we're not interested, you know? You know, I mean, it, I think this would be something, maybe January 25, and we say, okay, we can get it done maybe, and if they want to move forward with it, and we can get it all done within the next term, and we have the council on board, that would be something I'd be way more comfortable with. And then instead of doing what happened before, is going and putting a lot of county staff, a lot of community partners out there. And then to end up a situation where there was no longer the council's support for it.
Well, I appreciate your need for the comfort in moving forward. However, I'm not clear on what the, what the, the nature of the work would be. If we were to have a public hearing, we simply hold one and, and get the public input, right? And then decide, the council would decide what we're going to do. Is, or am I missing something completely on that public input component?
Well, there were some questions even today that they hadn't ever gotten to.
Yeah.
As far as doing staff work. And I think that would be important to work out any of those details. I, I will tell you, I'm not in favor of moving forward today. I, you know, I would like to know what the experience was in these other counties. I see all these over, I, I can tell you're a proponent of this, and no cost to the public on hearing. Yeah, okay, is that true? I, I would like to see what the actual experience is in the other 22 counties. I, I tried to quickly Google it while I was sitting up here to see what the downside was. I would like to move forward if, you know, some of these statements I absolutely agree with. You know, the, the goals are laudable, but whether the, you know, allows flexibility to address unique land situations, provides tax options for those who no longer qualify for other programs, empowers the community to further conserve, all great things. But I don't know if this system of overlay of rating is, is the way to get there.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just want to say.
Speaking conservation easements, I think that's another tool we could use. I'm really looking at a little bit more detail on what the actual experience is of these 22 counties before I could throw my weight behind it. But Glenn, you had, you wanted to say?
Just, I do want to respond to something you said, Gary, and that was, I did not say that there wouldn't be a cost to the county. Obviously, there's going to be staff costs or significant cost to, would be my staff, I would probably need to be. Oh, okay, okay, yeah, because, yeah, there, there would be costs. It, it wouldn't cost tax revenues, right? The tax revenues would just be shifting between people. So it wouldn't be like, because we're a budget-based tax system, it's not like county would be getting less or more taxes out of this. It would just be shifting, but there would definitely be costs to county to implement the system. to the county to implement the system.
Thank you for the clarification. Glenn?
Yes, so thank you for this presentation. So I feel a little bit of all of the above here, in the sense that for me, it sounds great. Definitely need a little bit more information, kind of what Gary mentioned. I, you know, from what I hear and from what I understand, it makes sense, and I would definitely support moving it forward. However, I do respect your thought process. That was going through my mind, actually, before you even said that, because if an election year can change things, and this seems to be an issue that can change based on election, I wouldn't want to throw resources at it until we know that there will be, you know, support from the council in the future. I did have a couple questions, though, specifically, what would happen to people that are currently in the program? Would they stay the same as like a grandfather, or would they change to the new system?
So what would happen would be, if you, they were, were to switch to a public benefit rating system, those people that are currently in open space, they, we would go and we would grade their properties. We would send them and say, this is what the new system would look like, this is what your tax benefit would be. And then we would transition them. If there was a people that said, hey, we don't want that, they can actually then, at that point, remove from the program without incurring all the costs because the program's changed. So there would be a way to transition people over, and then people that were not interested in.
And as to that, there is, you know, we've had different components of this presentation. So outside of the, what I see is the PBRS presentation, you know, you have that loophole that you just described, merging of the timberland, that involves grandfathering the original tax base. And I would be supportive of looking and moving forward on closing that loophole apart from adopting the PBRS. But if I understood your presentation correctly, when, if that merger happened, it would happen automatically, they're just brought in, but they would keep, they would grandfather their original tax base.
Yes.
Okay, so as part of that, I, in the future, for it to move forward with, that I would want to kind of have a little bit of a glimpse and understanding of the impacts to people from that change. And then I'm a numbers guy, so I'm curious, I'm thinking it's probably face value, but, you know, when you say percentage for this, percentage for that, is it a percentage based on the reduction or the total, you know, kind of like how you have a sale 50% off plus an extra 50%? Well, it's not 100% off, right? It's actually 75. So is it face value? So 10% here, 10% there, is a real 20%?
Basically, what you would do is, you would grade a property and you'd go through and say, okay, if it has, and I, it kind of, if you can pull up the land conservation slide, where we had kind of the, the farm conservation, you know, it's the. It's probably one more slide. I've gone through all the bottom, but. One more. Yeah, move that up. So you see how there's points, and when you're grading something in the public benefit rating system, you just go through and you take a look at, and you have the different criteria and say, if you have this, it's this many points. So you're basically taking and adding those points up, and then basically that would be based upon that reduction of a percentage of just the land values. This only impacts the land assessed valuation, doesn't impact the improvement.
Okay, great.
So you would just.
Thank you, that makes sense. And then the last thing was, you know, when we talk about fee, I noticed some had a fee, some did not. I would love to further understand that in the future. You know, I do believe in cost recovery, so I would like the program to support itself, the staff time that goes into it. On the flip side, don't want to create barriers to participation with those fees, so I would want to really look at that and balance that out. But supportive of moving forward, but also I do agree that it would be prudent to wait until January and see if we still have a council that's supportive.
So that was, I would like a yes or no check to give guidance to staff. So what I'm hearing is Sue is in favor, Karen's in favor, I'm not sure of Michelle, I'm against, and I'm not, you kind of voted on both sides, so I didn't understand.
I guess I would have to phrase it that I'm supportive of it but against moving forward until the new year.
I'm against moving forward to the new year as well. I want to consider the recommendation by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. So did you have anything else to present at this point? I mean, I would be interested in closing some of these other issues that you brought up, the timberland loophole, I think, and I've heard that before. I think you've talked to me about that before.
Yes.
I'd be interested in some fixes, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, we can have the, work with a prosecutor and attorney that could move forward with, you know, legislation, can I say legislation? I don't think, that's what you call them, but legislation, basically, to close those loopholes. We had a number of counties that have done it, so work with a prosecutor and attorney and get language for you on that.
Super. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Chair, I just wanted to confirm Counselor Belkot's desire. I think I heard you say you're not supportive of moving it to next year.
I was supporting that we put this on hold, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. I would be supportive of closing that forest loophole, if we could move forward with that. And, yeah, and I appreciate that you all have spent a lot of time, and seemingly it didn't go anywhere, but we'll see in January.
Do we have a third thumbs up on the closing the timberland loophole, at least moving forward in that process?
Is it a large burden, or is it something that can be done relatively simply?
It's relatively simple. It's basically doing.
Absolutely in favor.
Karen, Michelle? Okay, looks unanimous.
Yep, all right.
Perfect.
We'll work on that and we'll get it. Do you, Kathleen?
Super, thank you. Okay, so who has the, we have one more works.
Yes, it's the next.